A few people. I know they want to hear all about the audit, right?
A lot of what?
Audit. Yeah, that's why they're here. Um, so we're going to call this meeting to order August 22nd at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge and the invitation.
............ One nation under God, in this law, we may not cheat, and none shall fail.
Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. I ask you that you give us your wisdom and discernment to lead the town meeting tonight. And I ask you to help us make decisions that are best for our citizens and towns. In your name, yes, amen.
I'm I think so.
All right, you're not going to sit for long. Um, the first, oh, wait a minute, roll call.
Bishop Holland.
Here's.
Bishop Anderson.
President.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
President.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Bishop Mc. You know, he wouldn't be here.
Awesome. Um, so the first thing under presentations is a proclamation for West Orange Healthy Selfie Day. And we have someone from West Orange Foundation for Healthier West Orange, something like that.
Yeah. Okay, that's.
And we all know the drill, but go ahead and tell us why you're here.
Okay, so, uh, here?
Yeah, come on up.
All right.
Like a game show, come on down.
Yeah, so September is a healthy selfie month for us. And we celebrate two different ways. So one is a 5K and one is a photo contest. And we encourage people to do the 5K virtually or in person in September. And the in-person 5K that we host in September, on September 9th. And the photo contest is between 1st of September, the 14th of September. So you can send in your photos. And there'll be a lot of different prizes from family memberships to the YMCA and some gift cards that we will be giving out. So, thank you.
I will read the proclamation and then we're going to get us ready to. It's state of the nation.
Uh, my name is Peter Palti.
Okay. Um, Town of Oakland, West Orange Healthy Selfie Day. Whereas Healthy West Orange inspires healthy behaviors and provides resources to help residents make better lifestyle choices. And whereas Healthy West Orange champions health and programs that deliver health and wellness activities. And whereas Healthy West Orange unites health-minded organizations for whom a healthy community provides meaningful benefits. Whereas Healthy West Orange advocates for a healthy community decisions and encourages local leaders to keep their communities up and wellness at home. Whereas Healthy West Orange declaring the third Friday being December as the annual West Orange Healthy Selfie Day. And just to get to take with you after we take the picture. Did you bring the frame?
Yes.
Awesome. Usually we do it right here in this point.
That thing is for that one. We're too old. I don't know. Uh, somebody could, yeah, have somebody to hold it.
I'm kind of the same here, not, but they got a lot of time.
Do you guys have somebody to hold this? How many pieces? Oh. Oh, can I hold it? The name's Dwight B. and.
Yeah. Someone's like. All right, ready? Because it's like that.
Trying to pretend.
There you go.
Thank, all right, thank you so much.
Much.
Good to meet you. Yeah. I like it.
That was for change.
Thank you. Right?
Thank you so much. Thank you, bro.
Thank you, by the way.
Oh, take this with you too.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey. Onto Town of Oakland Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas throughout Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the history and contributions that the Hispanic and Latinx Americans have made to the state of Florida. And whereas Florida has the third largest population of Hispanic people in the nation with more than 5 million diverse residents within the Sunshine State. And whereas we honor the rich and vibrant traditions of Hispanic and Latinx Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Whereas Hispanic Americans have played an important role in the history of Florida from the early days of the pioneer to our current legacy of leaders in international trade, technology, education, and aerospace. And whereas Hispanic Floridians have been an integral part of our communities whose contributions, passion, and skills as agriculture producers, farm workers, and growers have long shaped Florida's agricultural success. Whereas from September 15th to October 15th, we pay tribute to the dedication and service of the Hispanic and Latinx Floridians for their efforts to improve the state of Florida and pave the way for future generations. Yay. And we also have a new exhibit coming on September 15th.
We have. For this to the team when when we have. New edition and front. And on October 7th, we're going to continue to celebrate that and have Martin, um, Fahey Reno for Music Under the Oaks.
Nice.
Recreating.
We're looking forward to that. Okay. Boy, we've got a lot of these. This is the last one. Town of Oakland National Preparedness Month. Well, that's topical. Whereas the month of September is recognized as National Preparedness Month and creates an opportunity for every resident in the Town of Oakland to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for emergency natural disasters. Whereas the 2023 National Preparedness Month theme is preparing for older adults. And whereas during an emergency, every second counts, and emergency preparedness programs educate individuals and families on how to prepare before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas these programs address threats of severe weather, terrorism, and other potentially life-threatening circumstances to make our communities better repaired, better prepared, resilient, and safer. Whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident and all Town of Oakland residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. Whereas all Oak Town Oakland residents are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities and become more prepared by making a plan, building a kit, and staying. Right. We are now to public forum. So if there's anyone here who wishes to speak about something that is not on the agenda, now's your opportunity. Okay. Consent agenda. Do we have anything we wish to pull out, discuss? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept consent agenda as presented.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And do we have any questions or comments from the audience? All in favor?
All right.
All right, other policy matters. Appointments to planning and zoning board.
So with the with the passionate wants from the, he was on the planning and zoning board in July. He was there for two and a half years and served as well. A position became open, regular position board. And so Chair Shay, the governor, and Nancy Ross to, um, she's already been sworn in, but to recommend her her appointment to the regular position. And then we have Matt Sutton here who applied right at the right time. I was like, thank you, I don't have to advertise because we'd like to appoint him as an alternate on the planning and zoning boards. We will want to have a board. So.
You need a motion.
Yeah, and Matt does seem to support it.
Yeah. So I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Nancy Ross to the position on from alternate to permanent planning and zoning board member. And Matt, I'm sorry, last name. Sutton, I'm sorry, Matt Sutton as our first alternative.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions, any comments? All in favor?
All right.
Congratulations, Nancy. And and I get to swear you in.
To Mary, it's at the very end of the folder.
Is it? This one? Okay, so you have to come up here.
That's where. You'll have plenty of time to do that later. That's fine. Just have to get the first name.
I'll sign. Okay, you have to raise your right hand. I'm Matt Sutton.
I'm Matt Sutton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution.
That will support, defend, and protect the Constitution.
And government of the United States, the state of Florida, and the town of. Of the United States, the state of Florida, and the town of.
United States, the state of Florida, and the town of.
Very good. Um, that I am duly qualified to hold on with the Constitution and laws.
That I am duly qualified to hold on with Constitution and laws.
Of the state and the town of Oakland, Florida.
Of the state and of the town of Oakland, Florida.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties as a member of planning. No, no, okay.
So that, I'm lost my first time.
You know, she loves me.
Well, it's.
So I knew where to stop. And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties as a member.
I will well and faithfully do the.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully do the duties.
Good enough, as a member.
As a member.
Okay, you're starting again. The planning and.
Oh, did you? That's right.
Of the town of Oakland, Florida.
The planning and zoning board of the town of Oakland, Florida.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's.
I don't know where to stop.
Fine, I didn't know where to start either.
Congratulations. Thanks so much.
Okay, here's.
Um, I think, I think he actually signs it, Mayor.
Oh.
That's for him.
Signs it.
For that, I was lost, like, you know.
May I borrow the pen?
You're right, it's.
Here you go. You get to sign it. And you sign both, right?
Yeah, and then I'll attest them and he gets one.
Does he get the pretty one?
Gets the pretty one, yeah.
Yeah, I need you to sign it.
Yes.
So now to make it official, you can't read it, but you're like, you're keeping the whole thing right now.
Verbatim, you have memory? I just, I'll see myself out.
Yeah.
Thank you. Eric.
Thanks, man.
If you're with.
Yeah. And Nancy.
That's all.
Please, yes. And, you know. Nancy.
Sweating before.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Nancy, come on, come on.
Yes, getting a picture.
If they like, we're not playing it.
It's the tall one. Our picture porn.
Definitely this way.
Thank you, Mr. British. Congratulations, thank you, congratulations. Congratulations. Wait for a start.
In that.
Could pay more attention.
It's Mr. British. He's worked long and hard with remain on this audit. And he's going to admonish us, I'm sure, so.
You got two hours.
Oh, oh, yeah. She's sitting right next to you.
You know, I I will be breathing tonight, but not because, um, I don't know a lot to talk about. But respect for your time, so if you have any questions, all I'm going through is presentations. Just stop and let me know.
Okay.
If you have a question after I'm gone, call me. But as I was sitting here, for the record again, um, or written, uh, I'm Mike Brennelson, President of Brennelson CPA. We are external auditors and here to go over the results of our audit of the town's financial statements for the year ended September 30, 2022. Uh, but while I was sitting, listening to earlier presentations, I thought a couple of things. One is a virtual 5K. I'm not sure what that is, but I think I could probably handle one of those.
I mean, you can do that, Mike.
Yeah. Like an athlete didn't know. The, um, and the second thing is planning and zoning. I I think about it every time I come to town. It's a beautiful town. Uh, you guys had a lot of growth and management really well. I think from, uh, you know, I I live just right down the road on I-4 and it doesn't look anything like this there. So great job with those conditions and and you guys as well.
Proud of this town.
If you could tell me how you did it, I could pass it on to some some people in.
Wasn't easy.
Yeah.
You got lucky, too.
Well, I tried to figure it out. I've been working here for 16 years now, you know? I've kind of watched it happen and I'm not exactly sure how it happened, but it.
We're still figuring it out.
I mean, I can give you a very short version. We have architect who is first place. Built here. We have the ordinance. What is appropriate, what's allowed, what's not. Then it goes to architectural review, then it goes to planning and zoning before it comes up. So there's a lot of detail that's in the meetings to make sure that whatever you're going to do, you know, when it looks like fabric of.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I give them, I think, an example, I say, these are like a homeowners association. I tell my my hometown. And they, you know, I'm crazy. I know a place that has an architect review.
Yep.
Building and stuff, but no, they don't. It is unusual, at least a little handful of cities and towns I work with. Uh, well, for the 9/30/2022 financial statements, this is the document. Um, I'm not going to go with the document, even having a question about this document. It's, it's grown considerably over the years. It's now almost 70 pages. There's no fluff in it. Every page is full of dense financial information. I could talk about every page for 30 minutes, even the table of contents. So the, uh, I'm not going to go over this. But if you have a question, just remember all these reports I'm going to talk about pinging to this document, not this. This one is put together as a summary at the end of the audit. It could have some mistakes. In fact, I found one right on the cover of yours. I had it on your cover, so Renee penciled in 2022 for me for tonight. But, um, what I like to do is I can go over the audit just by going over this handout and, you know, if you get any questions you have as we go along. So if we open the page on page two of the handout. The, um, I would do is I give you a summary of all our auditor's reports because you really hit the, um, really, like, I would say, uh, exacted it, um, this year here. You really have a lot of auditing that took place this year. You have your normal auditor's reports. You had a single audit for federal funds. A single audit is a strange name for a special compliance audit on federal grant activity. So you had a a federal compliance audit on your grants and you had a state. It's on state grants on top of your, um, normal auditing reports anyway. So I've summarized them here. I just want to go with this. Uh, the page references are over there on the left. So you can go read the reports and I do encourage you, you have to, to go read those reports as boring as they are. Um, maybe you can do one a night or one a week or something like that. But please read them because that's our main responsibility when we do the audit. If you read through that first report on page one and two, I went over it in a little bit of detail last year, changed last year. There's a bigger section on auditor responsibilities about what an audit is and what it isn't. That's the biggest thing. A lot of people think it's something it's not. They think that if we give a clean audit opinion, there's no errors. We're in great financial shape, everything's perfect. Well, you know, we do sampling, we do stratification. You don't look at 100% of the transactions or we would still be working on the audit. There's so many. So, uh, things can slip by us, items like that. So if you read through that auditor's responsibility, you'll see our responsibility is performing a lot. Not here the financial statements or to do the accounting. That's something that a lot of people confuse, too, is auditing is not accounting. It's kind of like if you were a doctor and you're going to oversee another doctor do a surgery and see if they did it right. You didn't do the surgery, but you're a good surgeon anyway. You watch the doctor do it and you can say whether you did it right or wrong. It's kind of like an audit. You got to be a good accountant to be an auditor, but it's not an accounting function. That's the town's function. That's your responsibility, mine is perform the audit. The results are on this page. Uh, the first one's on page one and two. It's our main audit report on the financial statements required by the AICPA. Every entity in the United States gets audited and has a report that looks somewhat like this one. And this one, we're looking to give you a report on two things. One, the numbers in the financial statements, are they fair? Can you rely on them or not? Are they reliable? Are they unreliable? And two, what's becoming a really big issue now is are they reported in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles? And that's the form and presentation of the financial statements. And as I say, every year we're adding one or two pages as the Gatsby, who is the standard setting body, just continues to make accounting principles. And we have to apply them and apply them. And every time they make one, that adds, it never takes anything away. So it's adding some paperwork. Well, I'll tell you, I actually wrote this down before I I came in. And I went back to 2009. The financial statements were 30 pages. In 2022, they're 47 pages, almost 50% bigger, just in 14 years of standards that have been added. And as I said, each one of those, it's not just narrative or it's not just dense financial information that has to be put together by management under that accounting function and audited by us. So that, those are the two aspects that we're looking for in this report. And what you have here, top bullet point, you see you have an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, that's what it's called sometimes. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give you as auditors. It's at the very top of page one, opinion paragraph, gives you our opinion on the financial statements. We're telling you in this, um, opinion that your financial statement's reliable. We're not telling you you're in good financial condition or poor financial condition, but we're telling you the financial information is reliable and you can go make that decision yourself by looking at the information. Uh, and two, it is presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, all 67 pages of it. So this is the best report you can get on page one and two. Um, you see the second bullet there, it's a fair representation of what took place during the year. I will not say you're in good shape or bad shape, it's just a fair representation. And here's the, um, Gatsby coming into effect. You had to implement a new rule that, you know, I have to go over this with you as much as you don't want to listen to me talk about Gatsby 87 leases. But what the, what the Gatsby did is they said, hey, we have all of these towns that are paying this money to use copiers and to use vehicles to rent office space. And flip side, you're renting out buildings, you're renting out the building to the post office for a non-cancelable period of several years. That sounds like a lot like a receivable, right? Then the bank do that to you when they loan you money for a house, right? They have a receivable and you have to pay them. So what the the town had to do is go out and assess all of these streams of payments and pull together those items that were considered leases. And there was a bunch of them. There's about a half a million dollars worth of leases got recorded in, um, 2022. Most of those related to vehicles, uh, police vehicles and the like. But, um, anyway, it's a big standard, it's there now. And you now you have these assets on the books that you didn't before. You have these liabilities on the books that you didn't have before. But there's a footnote in there about it and there's a, we have to report that in our auditor. Uh, the second was a correction of an error. Uh, the the town identified an error that it had not been remitting certain fees to the state for the, um, building permit surcharge. This charge is part of every permit. It's, it's, it's a minimum fee of $4 a permit typically falls well below any materiality threshold that that we have is doing the audit. But if you add that up over the growth that's taken place here over the last five years, it was a significant number. So that that amount, the town found it, the town calculated the amount due and the amount that pertains to prior years was about $80,000. So the correction of an error in financial statements. So, but what that means is they paid it this year, but it really should have been paid in the past. So since the bigger number, we had to change our prior financial statement. It's the interesting thing about an audit is we start right where we ended last year. We don't change that number. So, you know, you can be assured that the past doesn't change when it comes to audit, when in these audited financial statements. If something's big enough, we do have to crack it open. We do have to make a change and then it has to go in our auditor's report. That's why we're talking about it here tonight. It's rare, but, uh, it it's financial. Um, so that's the end of page one and two. Uh, beginning on page 57 is a series of the reports. Um, the first on 56 and 57, it's our report on internal compliance. This is required by, uh, auditing rules. And people have asked me, why are we being audited in under federal rules? And because the auditor general says all municipalities in Florida will be audited under these rules. And in this report, our goal is to report to you internal control deficiencies and non-compliance. That's the goal. You can see in the bullet points here, we have no non-compliance to report. That's the second bullet point. And the first bullet point is we have one material weakness and one significant deficiency. I'll talk about those, what those words mean. But I have two findings to report in this, um, letter, and I have a slide later, I'll go into that. Uh, following page 56 and 57 is a series of reports on those federal and state compliance audits. Feel free to go read through those. The big picture is no internal control deficiencies over those grants and no non-compliance over those grants. We'll leave it at that. I did write down, um, the town and in connection with the the charter school because you all operate under the same EIN, so their grant activity, which there is eight tons. You know, the, uh, the the grants flowing through districts in the charter has just been really heavy the last couple of years. The school grants and the town grants total, just federal money expended last year, nearly 22, $1.4 million. State funds expended last year were $773,000. It was a lot of money, you know, 2.2, 2.3 million dollars in total. Um, any of the clean reports on the the grant audits. Uh, next one on page 64 is a special examination, which is an audit essentially of compliance with section 218.415 of the Florida statutes. That has to do with investment in public funds. We have to look at how you're investing them. We have to look at your investment policy and make sure everything's in compliance with statutes. Everything was fine in that report. Uh, page 65 and 66 is our management letter. The management letter is the the catch-all for legislative action. The legislature will say, hey, we want auditors to audit the town's website. And say, that's not the case. But it is for charter school, we have to audit charter school website. Well, they put it in management. It's kind of a catch-all for items. And this gives us an avenue to report a lot of different things to you in this letter. I do want to say there is an error in here. The first bullet point says two findings, and that was a last year comment carried over. There's actually no findings in 2022. Those two findings that were reported in 2021 have been corrected. Uh, so there's no new findings, no new recommendations. There were no prior year findings that had continued effect. They've all been corrected. And then the last report that we get is loose in the back of the financial statements. It looks like this, it's called the governance letter. This report gives us an avenue to report, report non-quantitative items. If we're having trouble getting the audit done, disagreements with management. We disclose corrections to the financial statements. And that's a big deal. One of these findings has to do with corrections identified by the auditor. Uh, as I said, we're the, we're that doctor observing another doctor do the surgery. And if we see that, you know, well, you know, you're cutting on the wrong arm or something like, we have to point it out. And, um, that's, um, a lot of those, um, corrections manifest themselves in journal entries. We have to correct the numbers that were given so we can fairly present the financials, so we can issue a clean opinion, right? The rules are we're supposed to disclose those significant journal entries. So there are some significant journal entries that are disclosed in that report. That's the only thing that's kind of outside of the standard report when it comes to governance letter. But that that's a summary of our reports. And it it is funny, I can spend 10 minutes to go over something that took us, you know, 300 hours to put together. But, um, that is a highly summarized version. Like I say, each one of these are two or three pages. These, uh, take that into consideration. But I, you know, you know, every time I'm here, I never stop there because, you know, you might think, okay, wow, I didn't hear anything finance. You know, how are we doing? Um, and you know how I like to track and help go along and and make sure, or at least give you a feeling of where you're at and find from a financial condition perspective. As I said, that auditor's report doesn't say if you're in good or financial condition, but I'm going to try to go over a couple. As I said, that auditor's report doesn't say if you're in good or financial condition, but I'm gonna try to go over a couple of numbers. It would kind of give you an indicator. I I do this every year and it's not that I'm not a creative guy. It's just that if we look at the same thing every year, we get that memory. And we know, yeah, we went over this last, in fact, the last fifteen years, we've gone over it. But gives you a, gives you some continuity rather than me coming up with something different each year. So if we, if we go, do you have control of it over there? Okay, you've got it. Thank you. Didn't think this would work. Yes, if we go to the next page, before we even crack open the financial, can we go back one more? Before we even crack open the financial statements, I like to go over this slide because it gives you an idea of what is inside the financial. You can't just say, how's the town? There's, there's just no easy answer because there's so many different facets of the town. You can see it split right down the middle, right? There's governmental activities on one side and business type activities on the other. So what the Gatsby said is we need to report them both differently. Your enter, your business type activities is your enterprise fund, your water and sewer fund. It's supposed to operate like a business, generate positive cash flow from user fees, pay its debts. And possibly a transfer and dividend back to the general fund. The general fund is over on the left-hand side with the impact fee fund and the charter school fund. And um, these are those items that don't generally pay for their own programs. You know, it's paid for ad valorem and in other general revenues. So those are the two differences. They both report differently. So we both have, we have to look at them differently. Um, because they both report under completely different accounting rules. So you can see where we're going with the Gatsby. They really try to make things as complicated as possible. I'm not doing it. It's it's what they do. But so we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at one, the general fund, because it is the main operating fund on that governmental side. It's very important to know the financial health of your general fund. And then we're also going to look at the water and sewer fund and we're really looking to see, are we in good financial condition or not? So you can go ahead and advance it one. And I know you can't see anything on this. I really just want, like to put this on there just to point out, this is just one page out of sixty-seven pages. And you can see all the information on there. You can see your general fund has a column, your impact fee fund has a column, and it's not that the impact fee isn't significant. It has over five million dollars of of assets, over six million dollars of assets. Uh, but it's just those can't fund operations, you know, and and those will be spent as allowable uses pop up. So I kind of, it can skew the analysis if we include that money in your financial condition. And same with the charter school special revenue fund. It is earmarked for charter school operations. So I don't look at those, I just look at the general fund. And and where you start, when you look at this, there are all kinds of numbers here. It's big numbers. Um, first, I like to look at the top number, cash. I've got it highlighted up there. Unrestricted cash is two point three million. But that doesn't tell the whole story because if you've got two point three million dollars in cash and you have two point three million in liabilities, you have no net worth. So what I want to do is look at the net worth number. That's the third line from the bottom, on the far left. It's one point two million dollars. So I can ask you, it's, this is your unrestricted reserves. This is a reserves at nine thirty twenty twenty-two. Um, in the general fund and I can ask you, is that good or bad? Because we don't really know. It sounds good. It's one point two million. It's over a million. But I always use Tampa as my example. They go through a million dollars a day in their general fund. So it wouldn't be very good if you were Tampa, you have one day of reserves. Uh, and I have my, my smallest client is the city of Webster. I don't know if you know, it's the flea market city and there is a city there. And they go through about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. So you have over a year's worth of reserves if you're Webster. So we have to look at something relative to the town of Oakland. So that anything with a dollar sign in front of it has to be rendered into an equation of some sort. So what we do is we divide this by your annual expenses. So your annual expenses for twenty twenty-two and your general fund was eight point eight million. And I went back, you know, I was, while I was doing this, I was looking at the two thousand and nine financial statements. Because that was the first year I started working with town and and your expenses in your general fund then were two point four million. So you've gone up almost two hundred and seventy-five percent in expenses in those years. So that's why it's important to kind of scale this analysis as the town grows, reserves need to grow with it. So we do that math. We take that eight point eight and divide it into that one point two million. And if we turn page to the next track, we get that calculation. It's in the bottom right there, thirteen point nine percent, fourteen percent. So two months of reserves was sixteen percent. So you're a little under two months of reserves and you know, I talk about this every single year, that the GFOA recommended minimum is two months. So you never want to be less than two months of reserves. And it's not a target, you know, we say that's the ground when you're flying an airplane. You want to be target somewhere, let's say twenty-five percent. Um, it gives you an idea where you're at. Well, it's still an uptrend. It's just a slow uptrend from twenty seventeen. All the way up to twenty twenty-two. Now, the red line are going to be your peer groups. And this is a group of uh, towns and cities that are like size to the town of Oakland, taxable property value and population. So just, it's not to say you need to be at eighty-three percent. It's just letting you know what like-sized cities are doing. The takeaway from this is that the general fund does need to improve its financial condition. Uh, and it is, it is. If you go back, if you look at twenty seventeen, it was actually negative. That means you had more liabilities than you had assets. If that was a standalone company, you'd technically be insolvent. So if it is improving, it's just improving slowly. And and the reason I go over this is in an inflationary environment, if you have fourteen percent in reserves and expenses go up fourteen percent, you don't do anything different. You're out of reserves next year, uh, because just inflation will eat away at that fourteen percent. So that's always a a goal in the enterprise fund is to increase your reserves. Uh, if you just get the slide ahead one more now, I didn't miss a page in here where I usually show a picture of the enterprise. We're going over to that other side of the town. We have the governmental activities here. We're on the enterprise fund side. And we do the same kind of math. We look at that reserve number and it's one point six million dollars is what you have in your unrestricted reserve. In your enterprise fund and you build about two point five million dollars of revenue. Again, back in two thousand and nine, the enterprise fund built four hundred and forty thousand. Of the two point five millions or two point one million dollars more than fourteen years ago. Uh, that reserve ratio is sixty-four percent or it's going to be about seven months. And that's where that you see on the far right, the um, solid green line is the town of Oakland. The dotted green line is going to be your peer group in in the state. So sixty-four percent is great financial condition typically for an enterprise fund. There is no rule of thumb on how high or how low it needs to be. It just really need, it depends on the needs of the system. You know, if you have a lot of replacement that's going to have to be funded out of reserves, that needs to be pretty hot. You know, if you have a relatively new system and any replacements are going to be funded with grants, low interest loans and the like, maybe you don't have to have such a high number. But it gives you an idea of where you're at. So it's a pretty strong number in the enterprise fund. If we go one more slide, um, you know, we're, we're looking at financial condition of the enterprise fund. We're saying, okay, we would look like we're in good shape. And you know, I've talked about it over the years and when Dennis was here, you know, we always had the opposing argument. You know, he says, we gotta put gas in the tank to get to California and I'm like, you're gonna run out of gas, you know? And so we had this uh, these conflicting views and me being an auditor and conservative, the sky is always falling, you know? And uh, he, you know, he'd be in the visionary. Um, he was right. At the end of the day. Now, I just want to show you this. This is an operating statement of your enterprise fund. You see the calculation at the very top. There's the two point five million dollars you build. That's up twenty-five percent from last year alone, up half a million dollars. As you add customers to the system. Uh, the operating expenses didn't go up as much, so you're more profitable in twenty twenty-two than you were in twenty twenty-one. You had a twenty-one percent gross profit margin, meaning you had twenty-one cents of every dollar you build a customer left over after you pay those expenses to operate the system. That's very good. Up from seventeen percent last year. And I showed this graph at the bottom just to show you. If you go back to twenty seventeen and if I had prior years in here, it was, those were some pretty rough years on this indicator. Because those were the years that the sewer system was being built and put into service. And you can see it, I have a dotted line there that pulls the sewer expenses out. So you can kind of get a good idea. You know, and a good idea of just the water activity. But you can see you're, you're well above your peer group. Twenty-one percent is a very healthy ratio in the uh, in the enterprise fund. So I I feel really good about the enterprise fund. And I, I don't have such concerns about the general fund because you've got a good reserve in the enterprise fund. And that, you know, that reserves can be transferred from one side of that bubble, from the business side to the governmental side with an inter-fund transfer. Is all that it that it takes to equalize the two. And typically, that's the typical municipal finance model is you have the governmental activities operated at deficit. The enterprise fund, business type activities operate at profit and you settle the two with a transfer between the two funds. So something you can always do now, both funds, um, you know, were in trouble. And the enterprise fund was relying, or the general fund was relying on enterprise fund transfer. Then we have a bit, a different story to talk about, but that's not the case. So I think you're good. Just a little tweaking in the way transactions flow and maybe establish a transfer to the general fund, a dividend. Back to those governmental activities that don't typically cover their own expenses, you know, is not a bad thing. In fact, it's small. I I always say it's like at, at a, at a home where you have two people that live there and one works outside of the house for pay. One works every bit as hard in the house without pay or, you know, without external pay. That's the general fund, you know, and then the, and the one working outside the homes like the enterprise fund, when they come home. You gotta make a transfer, right? Or how does, how does that ever even work, you know? And it's kind of cities can can work just like that. If you advance one more, this is simply revenues per resident and expenses per resident for the enterprise fund. And and I think I had a, I I just like this graph because it really shows you your profit margin, which is the gap between the two, right? The gap between your revenue and your expenses, your profit margin. You can go back to twenty seventeen there and you can see expenses were greater than revenue. So I I put all these extra slides in here that I don't typically put in here to show you. There hasn't been a pretty strong turnaround over the last five or six years in the enterprise. And since we're on the enterprise, we have one more slide on uh, on the, on the second to last page. Um, page ten of the handout. This is just cash flows. I just want you to look at the green item. You can dig into this if you want. The green line is your cash flows from your enterprise fund after you paid for operations. After you've paid debt service, look at your debt service. That's the red line, a hundred and nine thousand dollars. So you have a enterprise fund that generates two point five million dollars in revenue and you have debt service of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's, that's in a strong financial position as well. So I'm just, just another way to point out that it is a positive cash flow generating enterprise. You can see here did really well in twenty twenty-two at eight hundred thousand dollars. Again, you go back, I like this reference back to twenty seventeen, that was negative. Uh, when this indicator is negative, that can't, because you will, this is strictly cash flows. If it's a negative, you'll run out of money. Because this is just the, the heart and the lungs of the enterprise fund. You have to, you know, pay for operations. You have to pay for debt service and you have to make a transfer if that's in the budget. Um, if you don't do those three things and still generate positive cash flow, problems there. But I'm just showing you, you're, you're in enterprise funds in a healthy position. Okay, we go to one more slide when we talk about findings. Now, let's start at the bottom. Uh, there's some terminology in these reports of what the the standards do. They require us to call findings different things. A material weakness is the red one there. It's highest level of severity. What a material weakness means is, is um, because of that weakness, there's a chance that a, a, a large error could be present in the financial statements and not be detected by, you know, the staff performing the, their normally assigned functions. It's just the system's not set up right to catch errors. Uh, and and these could be big errors when we're talking about a material weakness. A significant deficiency is a step down from material weakness. It's not as bad, but something that's important enough to bring it to your attention. And that's really the wording in the, is a real lot of professional judgment goes into what's a significant deficiency. The yellow section is called a management letter comment. These are things that get reported in the management. Remember I said there were two last year? They got corrected this year. Those had to do with um, and um. Oh, you can see them at the top actually. One of them was capital asset inventory. You see that the the town hadn't prepared a capital asset inventory in a long time. And in the last two years, the town has not only formed an inventory, gone through all of their tangible personal property, their real property. You know, starting to get it into the town's accounting system and managing it themselves. So they've come a long way in managing capital assets. Uh, there was a budgetary control. Uh, there was a budget overrun last year. That's not the case this year. There was a year-end budget adjustment that amended the budget. So the budget wasn't overrun in um, twenty twenty-two. So those were corrected and those are management letter. So the first item at the very top, it's a broad finding called internal control over financial reporting. And you can go to the reports on page sixty-one to sixty-three and there's a lot of detail in there what it is. But it is still a pretty broad comment. Essentially, to summarize, this comment says that we are still finding a lot of errors in the financial statements. There have been great improvement over the last several years in the financial statements. But we still, if we continue to, you know, let's say a page of those material journal entries that that are in the governance letter. Then we're still finding too many um, entries that are material to the financial statement. So like I say, this, the way these findings work is they go on the books and they're there until they are cleared. That's the way they work. They don't ever go away. So this one, um, you know, at the point that the year-end closing process gets done properly and the way it works is. You know, management's given the opportunity to prepare the books for audit. And then they give it to us and that is the official start of the audit. You know, we start before that, but that's when we get the numbers and any adjustments we make to those numbers are considered adjustments when we're looking at this finding. Anything we make that are significant over that timeframe um, can lead to, to this finding. So so the corrective action here is just, you know, and and it's difficult. As I said, they keep piling on these standards and they're very difficult standards. They're not simple to implement. This new, new lease standard has caused a nightmare for, for me and the business perspective. And a lot of my clients trying to chase this stuff down and figure out if you have to go through this math, you know, doing this present value calculation of the stream of payments and figuring out exactly what we need to discount. Yeah, and well, you know, in, in the, the downside is, it's, it's not mine, you know, I'm the doctor observing someone else prepare their present value calculation. So if I've got to do it and I find some material errors, right, and it can lead to a finding like this. So I want to say this, this finding has been on here for a while. And but I I don't want to, I do want to let you know the management has done a great job making them. But we just need to tighten it up a little bit more. Uh, there is a current year recommendation. You can see it in the middle of this page, twenty twenty-two dash oh one. It's on page sixty-two, sixty-three of the audited financial statement. And this is a new finding. It's actually an old finding that kind of popped back up again this year and it has to do with developer-related transactions. As you know, you've adopted ordinance twenty fourteen dash oh one. That provides criteria for accounting and reporting of the costs associated with these, the costs of developer review, such that. You know, residents of the town shouldn't bear the cost of the developers' activities and that's the idea behind it. And so you're going to capture those costs. They're going to put it in an account. You're going to bill those developers for that amount. We just have not been able to take the costs that are expended and put into the charred back account. Trace that directly to what's being charged to the developer. And then sometimes the receivables that have been charged to the developers aren't being followed up, filed, followed up in a timely manner. Basically, collections activity on the developers. You know, we, we had a similar finding with this. This is an issue many places. Don't think you're alone. You know, this, this development comes in and it hits. Um, local governments in a rush and a lot of times they're caught flat footed and it's hard to ever self-correct and get it all right. Um, I just issued this finding in another town and they took it and they've started to go and chase down. They've generated about a hundred thousand dollar revenue just by going down and chasing down some of these costs that are in the, the town records and and getting to go to make payment. So that's um, that is finding twenty twenty-two dash oh oh one and that is considered a significant deficiency level. Not a material weakness, but something that's not quite a material weakness, but still important enough to bring it to your attention. But that's it. There's, there's only those two findings in the financial statements, the all of them, other ones, the three, there were three corrected last year. There was a bank reconciliation finding last year. There was a material weakness. If you remember that, that's a, that's a big deal. That's been corrected and that's in good shape. And that, that was a lot to do with converting to a new accounting system. Now that the management has a year under the belt, they're able to not only do the bank recs, but generate the reports that we need to do the audit of the bank reconciliations. So with that, I will close up. I hope I gave you an idea um, of where the town is financially. I would think if you were to look at the town, if you said, how's the town doing as a whole? I would say just fine. If you were to, if you were to say, we've got two months in the general fund and we have seven If you were to, if you were to say, we've got two months in the general fund, and we have seven months in the enterprise fund. If we combine, because they're about the same size. No, they're actually not the same size. Now, one's actually three times bigger than the other. But the, if we were to combine them, you know, probably around four or five funds, which isn't bad. It's just that, you know, one is healthier than the other. So, um, so I'm not overly concerned about it, but we will talk about it every year. So with that, with that, I'll close and, uh, appreciate your time tonight. I, I really appreciate your confidence in our firm and what we do, because we take it very serious. Um, we don't do anything but government audits now. So that, you know, public funds are important to oversee, because you don't have direct stakeholders. And, um, I do appreciate that, and I appreciate management working with us as we do a lot of the work remotely. Um, this COVID has caused a speed bump that keeps on giving in our business. And all of these new accounting standards, we haven't been able to come out and spend the time we have in the past. So I appreciate them getting everything to us, um, when we need it. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions to my head.
I would like to say that you didn't say city once.
That's four years in a row.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's counting.
I would like to thank you and Renee for all the hard work on this audit. Anybody else?
From all of us, the same thing. We just appreciate you, Mike.
Just got one question. On page 10, on the operating expenditures, expenses per capita. Well, in 2020, it was hit a peak. What?
A lot, a lot of times that has to do with, um, your, your, the rate increases aren't keeping up with expenses. The, the expenses are, are the, the profit, the gap between the two. That's what you mean. It kind of peaked in 2020. And so, you know, in between 2020 and 2021, 2021 and 2022, in both years, the municipal cost index, which, um, is the, the inflation gauge used by the auditor general. That went up 11% in each year, at 11%, 11%. I know rates didn't go up in 11% each year, and that's typically what it is, is that it lowers that profit margin as your expenses aren't keeping up with rate increases. You know, oh, actually, over the six years, you see here that municipal cost index went up 27%. So that turns $10 into $7.50 in six years. And so, I mean, that's, but that, did that answer your question? That's typically what it is.
Well, the, the, the expenses and both the revenue are both declining. We've still got a spread there, so.
Okay, I got you. But, oh, I got you. You mean just overall?
Yeah, why, I mean, right, how does the expenses and the revenue both decline like?
Yeah, I think that typically falls down to, um, one, it's the operating expenses are on a constant dollar basis. So that takes into account, um, uh, inflation. We, 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 we deflated back to 2017 numbers. So the numerator, um, would actually, it, it, it in, no, it would, um, yes, it would increase. Second is population. Population grows not directly related to the number of customers, right? Because you may have, you know, four people move into the town and only one utility account gets set up.
Answered right there.
Okay.
I was looking more at the spread. On 2019, you have a spread of 134, which actually was the peak. And it was close at 132 between the 572 and 440, but it drops 2022 to 90. And it's a bigger drop than the 11% on the spread of the profit in between.
Right.
More than the 11%.
Yeah. You know, and what does drive this a lot is to the fluctuation of just operating expenses in general. I, you know, I can go look and, and probably give you a little more detailed answer exactly what it is. But, um, let's say there's, you know, a large repair in a year, let's say the water line breaks. Anything that's not capitalized can skew, you know, like the one-time repair items. And, and, you know, well, if you look at revenue or expense, it'll fluctuate a little bit. The reason I do this per capita is because if you just look at revenue, it's always going to go up, right? Because it's, um, because you're adding customers. The gross revenue is always going to go up, even if the spread, you know, is shrinking. That's why I do this, to kind of filter out the noise. Why that decreased like that, I, I, I'm gonna, I'll look back, and I'm gonna get it to the town manager, and he'll get it to you.
Like, Peter, we just went through some reporting for our script. Same type of questions. Um, a lot of times we're gearing up for the new communities, and they'll be like a larger purchase of, of, of a major amount of meters. So things like that, different, could also be large expenses like.
Well, before I went to more questions, thank you, Renee, and thank you, Mike. Thank you, staff, and all 300 hours. Uh, this is reported in September of 2022, the year prior. And I know we're in August. It's about 11 months. And I know it's 300 hours and a lot of work to put, and you, you start when you turn, when Renee, our town, turns it over to you. Can we get more real time, and what can make this quicker to figure out 2023, not wait a full year to get?
Right, rather than waiting a year. Yeah, no, that's a great question. Um, it, it really, the way we do our audits is as soon as a auditee is ready, if the, uh, local government is ready to audit, they contact, so you get ready. And then we start on, kind of like that. It's almost impossible. We've tried to block plan out the year. Okay, we have Oakland scheduled for this time, Auburn though this time.
When do you start with Oakland?
We, we start, uh, actually, we, we should be started right now, because we do some interim work. We do some planning. We don't actually take the numbers and run with them until we're given the go-ahead. But typically, we come out here in December and do a preliminary look at the numbers and kind of give some feedback to Renee. Give her kind of a list of things that she'll want to look at, if it's final number. And then it's just whenever we can get it back. I mean, it's, it's tough to get a local government audit done by, in the change. Because of the closing and all of the adjustments we made, you know, we're pulling in all this different data from, you have, you have actuaries that get involved, because, um, you have this thing called the other post-employment benefits, which is the, basically, the statutes in Florida say that if you're an employee and you retire from a town, you can participate in their healthcare. And then therefore, that some of that numbers have to go on your books. The actuary can't get started until the year is closed. I know I'm rambling. I don't really have a direct answer to you, but as soon as we get the information, that we get the go-ahead to go. And management wants to make sure, they want to make sure it's as accurate as possible and not be in a hurry, as opposed to, if you get them to, it's too early, we're going to have all the errors, and we have continued findings.
It takes a couple of months after the fiscal year ends to close out all the years, people account for everything in that, that year. So it takes, the fiscal year ends, it's about four months before you probably, I would think, the town, any town would be.
Yeah.
Completely ready to even begin the.
That's right.
I was gonna say, we normally kind of start seeing you March or April, more regularly, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Us- usually, if the, if the town is going for the certificate of, there's a, there's an award you can get if you get, do this extra work and get it done by March. But usually, it, it is around April or May is when I, I get around to doing.
And that's normal for all municipalities.
They, no, they, um, the earliest one I typically get done is January. That's four months into the year. And, and, you know, they start on it 10/1. They're working on it to get it closed and get it to me to get the audit done.
Okay.
It does, it does take a while. It's not a, it's all.
Hey, one more question, that, uh, the findings, especially on the developer-related transactions. Was that something that we just didn't classify correctly, or we're just, uh, not, no, we have impact fees? And there's other costs that we want to go after with the developments? Something that we left on the table, or that we misclassified? We did charge, we did invoice, we did change order, and was misclassified? Or can we start, when can we start getting that?
But, yeah, I, I think a couple of years ago, this was a, was a finding, and I think what we found with misclassification.
Okay.
Because there, there are two accounts in this, in the, almost said, in the town system, the, um, that collect these costs.
So we are, are developers then?
Well, they're being, they're being segregated.
Okay.
In, in a cost bucket.
Good.
Now, what we're finding is not 100% of those costs that are in that bucket are being passed on to. Now, that could be one of two things. Either there are valid costs to be passed through that are in that bucket that aren't, or there's costs in that bucket that shouldn't be in that bucket. They should maybe be in town expense, something like that. One of those two items.
Okay.
And you see, if you look, yeah, you've got it open there. I go into a little more detail than I did, um, summary, but on that, on that finding, on that page, I go into a little bit of detail. There's some, several bullets. There's four bullets there of the condition, what we, what we noted, and why we made that finding, so.
Okay. Anything else? I do have one comment, um, and it may not necessarily pertain to water rates, but I've said this before. I think that we need to have a call with Raf Telleus, because I haven't seen him in a long time, and we need to reevaluate. Make sure that we're not, you know, not getting what we should be getting. And that has to do with impact fees and.
Yes.
All of that.
That's, that's my, there are good.
I was hoping they would be more proactive about it, but if I haven't, can't remember the last time I saw them. I don't.
If, if I may, we have a revenue sufficiency study going on right now that you haven't seen.
Okay.
And, uh, we should be getting that back, uh, I would think, pretty quick.
Is that Raf Telleus?
Yes, it is.
Good.
Good.
That's good. Um, do you need, we need a motion to accept the audit? Yes. Okay, so I need a motion, please, if we've answered all our questions.
I'm making a motion to accept the, uh, audit. We're ending in September 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
And Mike, thank you again.
Thank you, Renee.
We appreciate you.
Good job.
If you do have any question, my number is at the bottom of those reports.
He loves to talk about it, so take him up on it. Um, so, staff reports. Do we have anything from staff? I think that's it, right?
Yes. Good evening, madam, to the town. Uh, just a couple of updates. A couple of works that submitted a FDP grant for our alternative board project, like a pubco. Uh, as you all know, Mike Parker's an excellent grant writer, and without him, um, a lot of those projects, including the water and sewage, grants and things that it takes. Uh, the town just wouldn't simply have the money to, uh, do a lot of these things without all the work for, that we, that we do in, in the grant writing. Um, and then also, uh, we're looking to, I know there were some questions about, uh, Sadler Park, the linear park there on, on Sadler Street. We're looking to, um, begin, look at, to try to find some grant funding for that as well. We're pulling together all that information, the plans for the connector trail from Longleaf, uh, you know, possibly bring that all the way up to the actual tra- trail here on Tub Street. The, um, and, um, that's really all, all I've got this evening. Um, I do know, um, the town, uh, does work hard at obtaining grants. Um, I don't know what that dollar amount would be if we put those all together, um, but maybe we might do that, kind of give, give you all.
Been just busy trying to.
Yeah, he's, you know, he gets so many of them that, you know, but I think it's gonna, I, I think, um, over the past five years, we, we could put together a number. And I think that would probably shock a lot of people as compared to our, the amount of revenue that we bring in. We just.
Good number to have.
The, the amount of, of work that we do that is so far and above our pay grade is really amazing. This town is really much more sophisticated than most towns our size.
Yep, so.
And we're proud of that.
We're continuing to, uh, stay on top of the, the grant writing, and then hopefully, you know, here in the next several months, have a couple more grants submitted and kind of waiting on a response for some of these recreation projects to kind of stretch our dollar.
And we're going back to Tallahassee in January for two million, right?
Yeah.
Is that where we landed? Pursue it.
Sure, so, um, so anyways, just kind of an update on, on the towns, uh, that we are actively seeking grant funding. And it was good to see everybody at the Florida League of Cities Conference. Uh, congratulations last time, Mike, once again, for, was recognized at the League of Cities Conference for 25 years of service. So, uh, congratulations on that, and, and that's all I have this evening.
And I don't want to steal, um, Mike's thunder, but everybody that Andy ever worked with in the state of Florida had made sure that they would came and told us how lucky we are to have it. And usually, town managers don't leave places under those kind of conditions.
When I asked Andy to buy lunch later, he said, I have no money. I gave it to all my friends today.
It was amazing.
Light wallet when I left there.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was, a lot of people approaching us, Andy, that, that knows Andy and very well pleased, and wish they had him back in their town.
Yes.
That a lot. So it was great.
Yes. So Sal, you got anything?
Uh, to continue on that, the, the, the 2023 Florida League City, the Florida City League, uh, conference was awesome for. Um, and super proud of Mike Satterfield getting honored up there in 25 years of service. And really proud, and proud of our town, our staff, and everybody here, so.
Nick?
Good.
Mikey?
Okay.
Okay, um, I went to the ribbon cutting for five-year anniversary of Healthy West Orange this morning. Um, that was really fun, and I can't even remember everything I thought. We have been working real hard to, you know, the, uh, select, or the hiring committee at the chambers been working real hard to select a new chamber president as Cena is retiring, and we should have an announcement on that shortly.
What's her final, final day?
Pardon?
What's her final day?
Um, she is going to transition out at the, um, retreat, which is Oc- end of October, so that they can have time together before she goes. And that retreat is a good way for all of the, uh, board members to get to know the new president. And then Cena will be on speed dial for a little while. So that's the plan. But we got, we had a healthy roster of people to interview. We interviewed 11, whittled it down to three, and then did three in-person interviews. So all qualified candidates, all of us, so.
Makes it hard.
Yeah, well, it's a good, it's a good hard.
It's a good hard.
It's, it's a good, it's a good problem to have. So anyway, that's all I have. Um, anything else? Y'all are, um, have you rounded up people for the economic luncheon?
Yeah, we have it.
I know we have a table, but do we have a full table? Awesome. I love Sean Stink. So only guy, I'm sorry, Grindelson, but he's, he's amazing.
Oh, you.
You are too. He's just, I mean, you know, he's like, this is going to be a gravy boat recession rather than a salad bowl recession. He uses analogies that are hilarious. So, love you both. That's it? Oh, James is not here. Who's gonna stand in? Yes, sir.
All hearts and minds are satisfied. We're adjourned at eight, 10 p.m.
Did you write that down?